I want to be of the great council. I'd say happy new year to everybody officially, not in a work session as well. I'd like to ask that Morgan, Councilman Morgan, to do this in prayer for later on.
I apologize. I apologize. Thank you again for another day that you made with us. Thank you for serving the energy board that came today. We pray, Lord Jesus, that you will be with us here in this meeting tonight. That you will be with our country. That you would enable us, Lord, to be good leaders of this great city which you bless us with, or humble by the whole, in which we have, Lord, that God. We thank you, Lord, for all the entities that come together to make this city great. And we are blessed and cautioned to be blessed. We pray, Lord, that that will be his honor and it will be hand with hand.
That leads us to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Before we get kickstarted, before we skip over the important decisions of way that we reopen all of today by saying, I love the city and I love the region of the city. I love what we went through over the summer together and how we handle it. The way this council cares for each other, our differences, but we care for each other equally. And I think I'll approve that tonight in contrast to our right now. All right, do you have events before we go back to the over? Are there any conditions or provisions? Here are none. The events are approved by act of mission. Well, now we go on to bids, contracts, grants and expenditures. If there's no objections to council, I can handle four A through four N. You consider that very consent agenda. Is that okay? No objections. Let break right on. Present this ring to you.
Thank you, sir. I spoke last Tuesday night. This represents thirty-four vehicles in the current motor pool budget. There's fourteen bids, a total of one point one one million dollars. Thirty-one thousand seven hundred dollars under budget for those vehicles. And all of these are in the current council approved motor pool budget. So that will start off. First bid is eleven twenty twenty-one. This is for some new Dodge Chargers for the police department to refresh two thousand elevens last year of mannequin bed quarters. And so we have some that are older than that still. So the vice of police department needs to replace ten of the pursuit vehicle and one support vehicle. This is due to the age and availability of parts and the rising maintenance cost. The replacement numbers are there in front of you in the agenda items. Remember that we did not buy any police vehicles last year due to inventory problems that the manufacturer had. And so I received bids on October twentieth, two thousand and twenty. The low bid was from Casper's Dodge for twenty-five thousand nine hundred and seven dollars each for a total of two hundred eighty-four thousand nine hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars. Two hundred eighty-four nine hundred and seventy-seven dollars, and that will be the recommendation. Next, the next bid is thirteen dash twenty dash twenty-one. This is for six unmarked detective vehicles. Same reasoning, inventory problems replacing ground bikes and one old Ford Expedition. Again, they're going to improve budget. We received bid on October twentieth, twenty twenty. Again, the low bid came in from Casper's Dodge for this for twenty-five thousand nine hundred and ninety-seven dollars for one hundred fifty-five thousand nine hundred and eighty-two dollars. The next bid is bid number twenty dash twenty dash twenty-one. It's time to replace two of the motor pool cars under the public works department. The cars are replaced in our old four Tauruses, two thousand three models that are very undependable. We cannot find any small cars that lay better knees except for the Chevrolet Malibu, which is a four cylinder, very gas efficient car. Seal bid received on December first of two thousand and twenty. The low bid came in from Casper's Chevrolet for twenty-one thousand four sixty-two each for a total of forty-two thousand nine hundred and thirty-four dollars. The next bid was number twenty-one dash twenty dash twenty-one. This is for four one-half ton crew cab trucks for the engineering department and utilities department. The replacement numbers are there in front of you. And bids received on December first of twenty twenty again. The low bid did not meet the specifications, so we're going to recommend Casper's Dodge in the amount of twenty-nine thousand three hundred and eighty-seven dollars each for a total of one hundred seventeen thousand five hundred and forty-eight dollars for the total. The next one is twenty-two dash twenty dash twenty-one. This is for two one-half ton regular cab trucks. One for the utilities department and one for the engineering department. Bids received on December first again in twenty twenty. The low bid did not meet spec, so we're going to make the Casper's Dodge. And their bid was twenty-five thousand four hundred and eighty-seven each for a total of fifty thousand nine hundred and seventy-four dollars. Next bid is number twenty-three dash twenty dash twenty-one. It is for two one-half ton crew cab trucks with tonneau head covers. These are lockable beds that they can put tools and equipment in the back of bed and they can lock them down so that no one can get in the back without tearing the bed up or whatever to get to them. One of us going for the cemetery and the others to the fire department, replacing motor vehicles. The bids came on December first of two thousand and twenty. Again, the low bid did not meet spec. Casper's is a recommended vendor for twenty-nine thousand nine hundred and eighty-seven dollars each for sixty thousand one hundred and seventy-four dollars total. The next bid is twenty-four dash twenty dash twenty-one. It is for a three-quarter ton crew cab truck that will be used. It's a full wheel drive that will be used by the utilities department. This truck will be used to haul the accused trailer. We bought a piece of it recently as well as the big trailer for it last year. This truck will be used to go on to air guys that are low and they need a full wheel drive as well as a heavier chassis. It will replace an existing truck. The low bid came from Casper's Dodge for thirty-two thousand two hundred and eighty-seven dollars. The next bid is twenty-five dash twenty dash twenty-one. This is for a one-ton truck with a standard utility body for the utilities department and replacing a motor model truck. Low bid came in from Next Tran on the December first, two thousand and twenty for forty-one thousand nine hundred and twenty-five dollars and twenty cents. Let me pause and grab the next bag. The next bid is twenty-six dash twenty dash twenty-one. It is for a one-ton, one-ton crew cab truck with a regular body. This is for the public works department for the rideaway division to replace a motor vehicle. This truck will be used around town by the rideaway crew that pulls those motors and other equipment around as they fulfill the duties throughout the day as well as this crew cab that they can put a crew in that truck. The next bid is twenty-seven dash twenty dash twenty-one. This is for the engineering department. It is for a bucket truck for the engineering department. We have one, but this is a smaller one that will help in getting into tight areas and smaller jobs and things of that nature. It's in the budget. We open bids on December first. Next train is a recommended vendor for that for seventy-five thousand two hundred and sixty-four dollars and twenty cents. Next bid is bid number twenty-eight dash twenty dash twenty-one. This is an F five fifty truck that has an utility body on it that has an air compressor, air wickers, tiny lid bed on it, a little crane on it to help when they pull pumps such as heavy, heavy use. Bids received on December first. Casper's was a low bidder, but they did not meet the spec, so we're going to recommend Next Tran for eighty thousand seven hundred and fifty-two dollars and twenty cents. Next bid is twenty-nine dash twenty dash twenty-one. This is for an F five fifty truck as well with a utility body for the public works department, motor pool division. A very similar truck except it has some extra equipment. This is a truck that goes out at night to, to work on vehicles of the city owns that are tore up or whatever, so it has a big lighting system on it to keep the naked sky safe as well as show up in traffic while working on stuff. The low bid, the best spec was from Wayport and eighty-five thousand seven hundred and seven. Next bid is thirty dash twenty dash twenty-one. It is for an F five fifty cabin chassis with a little dump body on it. This truck will be used in the engineering department, the streets division. It's also responsible for pulling the heated asphalt trailer around town as they are in fat trouble to do that kind of stuff, so it's a headed trailer. And so this will also be able to all people around with it as well. The dump body will enable them to move trash and stuff like that from job sites. That's all the vehicles.
And who did you recommend the last one? Did you say who?
Ma'am.
Did you say who you recommended?
Oh, I'm sorry. I did. That was Next Tran as well. Excuse me. Fifty-four thousand two hundred and fifty-five dollars.
Counsel, any questions on that one? One million dollars for already approved or something?
I actually want to ask one from the board tomorrow. So, so we, 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 we.
Yes, sir. They'll go on to deals once we get everything. You know, they all will be here in six weeks, but as they come in, yes, sir. They'll take parts or something maybe, but they will explain that long day deals and sold.
Before we should call, if you give you a little comment, will you ever pay one?
No, I'll give all emergency equipment to them. And quite frankly, the.
I don't want to do one of that. Don't get it over here with me.
No, they're not bought from the dealer, but we purchase that stuff from the specialists in that area. And we'll put it on mostly, we do some of it in the shop and like the radios and the lights, the light bars, they're put in R C D and have a wonderful place out on River Street.
Mr. Mayor, we'll go objections to realize that. Consider agenda items as you mentioned and recommend we follow special recommendations for the low bids, new qualifications, agenda items four A through four N. So, 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 all the things, your hands.
Uh, next one is just an annual contract to be due for dumpster. It expires on January thirty-first. It's for the public works department. We buy four six and a yard dumpster to keep in inventory to put out at our commercial customers. And it was time. Louis Steele was a recommended vendor for that contract. I believe that has two years initially and then two renewals in it. The price that was offered is actually fifty dollars, but it had been paid three years ago. And we have been buying from Louis Steele, I guess, since I've been here for twenty-five years. So that would be a good job for us.
Believe we have said they've remained protected by the way. They do it over time for a bit.
May I personally approve the bid as presented on the agenda for?
Second, all the things, your hands.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Do you want to come back and tell us how much money you sent us?
We did say some.
All right, consideration bids, excuse me, I have a lot of consideration bids for the upgrade of a water main and services for the truck to go out there on you say.
Good afternoon, Frederick. That's the, as I said, the United States. We're replacing, this is part of our two-inch water main replacement program. Every year we go ahead and kind of identify the areas that we had the most problems with and wasn't being the most problematic. Last year we had to offer, this year we just make off there. And it's about eighteen hundred feet of two-inch water main. And currently we have about eleven houses on that two-inch water main. So you would imagine they have not the best pressure in town. We're going to replace that with a six-inch P E C water main. And it's called a fire hydrant. And so that they can have adequate fire protection in that area also. We received three bids. The low bid was R P I, Intraan Incorporated for one hundred and eighty-four thousand, one hundred, one hundred and twelve dollars and fifty cents. We're also asking counsel to approve a twenty percent contingency for unknowns that we may encounter once we start excavating out there in the road, which brings the total to two hundred and twenty thousand nine hundred and thirty-five dollars.
Have some more questions on this project? Any questions?
Two hundred and twenty, because I haven't seen you.
Yes, ma'am. Two hundred and twenty thousand nine hundred and thirty-five dollars.
Thank you, sir.
Any further questions on your agenda motion?
Mr. Mayor, can I, council, approve this request?
Second.
Second, all the things, your hands. There are no questions. House of the water.
Great.
It's everywhere. Ordinances of resolutions, consideration of orders to establish court on fees and dates under full contract of the Lance County Board of Elections for the twenty twenty one city of Austin municipal election. Mark, does it?
Thank you. Yeah, I'm there. Madison.
Our county manager.
You know, that was just hard to bring. You're doing good, counsel. Well, it's this time of year that's our municipal election year in November. This, this is a cycle where we have two seats that are up. It'll be districts two, districts four, and district six. And as local government, we have some things that are incumbent upon us that are required of the state. And one of those is to set the qualifying fee and advertise the qualifying fee before February first. And so the qualifying fee for each of those seats I just mentioned will be four hundred and seventy-four dollars. And that four seventy-four is calculated by taking three percent of the total annual compensation for that district or that post. That state requirements, that comes out to be four seventy-four thirty-one, but we backed it down to four hundred and seventy-four dollars. So that is one. Every other agenda that I'll need you to approve tonight. The other things we have to approve are some dates. And those dates being candidate qualifying dates. Those qualifying dates are August sixteenth through the twentieth. We also need to, even though the date for the election is set, but that municipal election date is November second, twenty twenty-one. We just need that in the form of a resolution. And if a runoff election is necessary, that runoff election will be November the thirtieth. Then also I need authorization to contract with the Lance County Board of Elections to conduct the election. And that includes the training of coworkers, all the things that go along with running the election. We've been very successful in the past with the Board of Elections doing that. So, so this is kind of a multi-pronged agenda item. I need the qualifying fee in motion, the qualifying dates in the motion, the actual date of the election, the runoff, and then permission to be authorized by the Lance County Board of Elections.
I have any questions? Let's see, like, any questions first of all, counsel? So, pretty straightforward. First, to approve the orders of qualifying fees and dates for the twenty twenty one city of Austin municipal election and to allow our temporary contract for services as well. Do I have a question?
You don't have to say all that. I got, I got you.
You really click.
I like it. I thought I did.
Um, if you want, we think terrorists going down. The legislature to approve the present with seven qualifying fees for districts two, four, and six for this year's municipal elections at four hundred and seventy-four dollars. The candidate qualifying dates will be August sixteenth through the twentieth. The municipal election date will be November second. And then if necessary, runoff election will be October the thirtieth. And then we also authorize the city manager to enter to the National Court of Elections to conduct the term. We want to leave the municipal.
She's not here, sir. All the things, your hands. All right. She's in the study yard.
Yeah, I, I just had a question.
Yes, sure.
If on the qualifying week, if you wouldn't want to start a deal off in your Friday evening, twelve o'clock.
There's some, some time crunches that the state regulates that it can start early then or be late then. I think it stops at four thirty on that Friday. Yes, sir. That'd be the day that's a little bit different, brother. And what I say is four thirty.
All right, you can say four. That is passed. We'll move on to state's local funding request. Consideration of request to approve a recommendation committee structure for the appointment of a municipal court judge for the city of Austin.
Thank you, Mayor. As you spoke, Tuesday evening and prior emails after the death of Judge Bender, I look back and look at the process that was utilized at the time of Judge Bender was appointed. And even though we didn't do that process, I look back and we talk about it. I do think it's a very transparent, equitable process for, for those that may be interested in that position. But what they did in two thousand and six is we, they created a recommendation committee, if you will. I'm not sure that's the proper term. They, they created a committee to look at any candidate that turned a resume to the, to the response that we put out with our local bar association. That committee consisted of the mayor, the city manager, the city attorney, two council members selected by the council themselves, and the H R director. The H R director did not serve as a voting member. He served as an ex officio to make sure that H R personnel procedures were being followed appropriately by the committee. So that, that was the committee makeup. Now, one thing we did discuss Tuesday night that the city attorney and myself have since discussed is the placement of the city attorney on this committee. I think there's a high probability that he will have some folks from his firm that will apply for this job. And we just don't think that will be the, the best things to have the city attorney sitting on the review committee. Would the law keep it? Still a legal person, it just makes sense to keep it of a, you know, a current judge, a current attorney. We've got a lot of choices, folks, of then attorney and judges in our community. So would I keep that position a legal professional? We just don't think it's the appropriate thing to have our city attorney on this recommendation panel if there's folks from his firm that are going to apply for the job.
Who would you recommend?
I would recommend the first, the first name that popped online because I know him and Judge Bender work very well together and work on projects together will be Jim Timison with being. And he has won Judge Bender before in the past. So that will be the first one. He's been a judge, he's been an attorney. He, he worked very well with us, so I would like to, that would be my suggestion. Again, it's all these decisions are you guys' decisions to make. But I think Jim will be a wonderful selection to fill that spot.
And when we make this decision, if someone from our attorney's firm applies or are shooters to it?
Great question, Congressman. I think we should just go ahead and make that decision now because, again, very, very, very high probability there will be responses from commentary.
And just so you understand, I'll sit and serve as your legal counsel, but I don't want to take any votes or have anything like that, but.
It's understandable.
So you asked me to agree with the judge who has it, also to pick two council members, too?
The first thing that I asked tonight is to approve that, the committee structure. If that's, if that's the method in which you guys would like to proceed with your appointment of the municipal judge. Then if you're good with that, and all this to be in one motion, if you're good with.
Let's take it.
Okay, so motion one would be this structure. So motion two would be two city council members. And three would be the selection of the legal official.
I think, you know, the committee will be doing, it'll bring back a rest and a death threat It brings back a rest foundation draft of any self to council.
That's absolutely right.
Or send back.
Right, and I put it out of tentative schedule. If this is approved tonight, tomorrow morning, the package will go out to our local bar association advertising the position and the qualifications, the job description. Then on February the fifth, that'll be the last day for resumes to be received. February the eighth, the committee, if we give this route, would have these resumes for review, look at. February the eighteenth would complete the review. And this is an aggressive timeframe, but I think we can do it as review as well as interviewing the selected candidates. Then February twenty-fifth would bring the committee reports to the council, which would be in executive session at that point in time. And then February twenty-sixth, if we can make some decision on the twenty-fifth, there's a fourteen day public disclosure period for the selections that the state requires for folks to look at the resume and things of that nature. And then if that does well, March eleventh, you can make a primary council appointment at that point in time. That's about a sixty-two day process. In two thousand six, it was slightly over ninety days. So I think that it's an aggressive timeframe, but we can manage it. And always keep in mind, if we get off a little bit, we can always have a special call meeting to catch up as well.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
How many of you have voted? Do any of you have voted on this? Five?
Five, yes, ma'am.
You know, I forgot, how many of you, the attorney is still of sale. How do you, that you don't go sick there, I just don't remember.
We did have a municipal judge within our parole matrix here at the city, but it is one of those positions, this isn't a point of assistance position, such as myself, so I would need a good shit.
Well, you pulled back for candidates for other positions in our city. You could go there, pay grades or something.
Yeah, this was something more precise arrangements and a pay grade or something like that, Congressman. It would just be more precise arrangements to get anybody who's thinking about a good idea of what that may be. But there is a negotiation room for this position. Any more questions?
All right. The double question is counsel, I'm going to you for your first recommendation on structural.
I make a motion to set up the committee structure as presented.
Second.
All in favor, Joe Vance? You handle this, thank you, counsel. Mark, I'll open it up for the change from the city attorney to the recommended judge, Jim Henderson.
So.
Second.
All in favor? You handle this again. And counsel, I'll leave it up to you as to who on the blue floor with actual two counsel recommendations and who would vote on this. I'll leave that to you.
Yeah, I would have that way last night. I really wanted to go ahead and give some for so that we have an average and a standard.
For you?
I'll make counsel figures.
If I'm correct, wait, a second for the first?
Second.
There is a second, but second, two lead, we consider it for one position. All in favor, Joe Vance? Five approve. All opposition?
I like to.
All right. So next, your next recommendation?
All right, I like to.
Second. No, hold on a second. So.
There were two nominations, or nominations both. We need to have combinations and then.
So you want me to go across the board?
Yeah, combinations and then you vote the nominations. You see what I'm saying? So the sandwich was first.
So I'll make this easy. I was wrong on the nomination.
I second second.
Okay, so who's the second? Who's the?
The second.
Second, there's a name. So you think you got a passion, you got a second.
Beautiful. We got counsel on the heads and counsel on the two.
We have two municipal courts.
And we just need two, so if everybody's doing it, make that.
Yeah, so you got two nominations on the floor. Okay, and then you vote the first nomination and then you go.
Beautiful. All right, let's do this again.
Yeah, we got two nominations on the floor, just leave the.
We have a action, Mr. Mayor, this was spoken on both the nominees. We got Phil's noxus meeting. All right. Wonderful. All in favor, Joe Vance? Beautiful, yes. Mark?
I see.
Yes.
All right. All in favor, I have a big consideration of request to purchase a new spring system for the Mud Creek wastewater treatment plant that our lease will return to the light home.
I know. I will begin. This is for the spring system at the big works of the Mud Creek wastewater treatment facility. These springs are designed to take out most of the non-organic material that enters into the wastewater plants since the bugs can't deal with those. So it's basically a grate type system and all the materials get called on and then a grate and automatic grate comes and removes that material that's in the dumpster. This system that's there now, it's been there since the plant was modified and it's become corroded and it's allowing for many non-organic materials to get passed. There's some pictures associated with this and you can see what these devices look like and what they do. And the company that has proposed to replace this is the original manufacturer. It is Norheath. They are a sole provider for the state of Georgia for this particular piece of equipment. There's a sole source authorization letter in their app as well. They have proposed replacing this at a price of sixty-four thousand four hundred dollars, which includes shipping and installation, and we are asking for your approval.
I may go to the air. I always request my guidance to use.
Does that say? All in favor? You handle this, thank you, your. All right, the I see consideration of a request to purchase thirty sets of structural firecracker gear for our fire department. You very sticky chief, right about the.
Good evening, Mayor, counsel. Fire departments here and I request permission to proceed with the purchase of twenty sets of structural firecracker gear. If you recall, in preparation for fiscal year twenty twenty, in line with the city's goals of putting two sets of gear on every firefighter online, falls in line with our initiative of cancer prevention. This is a step in trying to achieve that goal. We get attached in the field with firefighters with different sets of gear. Came back and positive with glow. Thank you, how much it's been in service for a year. We evaluate what we have on firefighters, it's holding up well with the addition of our washers that we had so that they can keep this gear clean and swap it out. So we had sixty thousand dollars of line approved in the budget. Ten eighty fire safety equipment under M V P G O, national contract. We came in fifty-eight thousand four hundred sixteen dollars and thirty cents to fully addition of the thirty sets of gear.
Questions?
Chief, what will you, what we're doing, what would you use it for?
This is for structural firecracker. It has the thermal protection. It's required for every time of response to a fire. This is their fire gear, the clothing.
Oh.
Yes, oh, yes, sir. It's the clothing. And just to remind everyone, you know, it is our goal to put two sets of gear. Sometimes it does seem a little bit elusive because it has a ten year lifespan. So we set this number at thirty so that we can also move out the gear that's reached the end of its lifespan, but also add two to achieve that goal of two sets of gear. So it seemed a little bit elusive. We do it in a small step so we don't have a large fiscal responsibility later in the city in the future.
Well done.
I may have one question.
I thought you might. Second, all in favor, Joe Vance? Chief, your luck.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good to see you, guys. We might have a deep consideration for a request to purchase a hemp analyzer. First off, I appreciate the pride of it. But Chief, bless you, you have that. Good, she's a deal.
Can't be official, little.
I'm proud of you. I'm just good, chief.
Good evening, Mayor, counsel. This is a request to purchase a hemp analyzer for the Austin National Fire Laboratory. So mention to you all Tuesday night. Currently, our laboratory analyzes dangerous drugs and narcotics for twenty different law enforcement agencies. And to satisfy the neutral of the law requiring testing to differentiate between cannabis and hemp, which is point three percent T X C, the suspected narcotics have to be analyzed through a quantitation of purity, concentration, and focus. And currently, right now, we do have only biops testing this, and there's about a nine backlog, which is, you know, holding up a lot of prosecution. Current instrumentation of the crime lab is not real suited for this analysis. So in order to accurately derive the T X C levels of suspected narcotics, they must reach high volume for the cannibal separation. The hemp analyzer uses a high-performance liquid chromatograph, which is specifically designed to analyze the resolution of eleven different cannibal compounds. This process involves the substance is put in, that's about ten minutes. So given the specifics of this equipment, Shimatsu is the sole manufacturer of this hemp analyzer and the services. It costs to purchase the hemp analyzer of sixty-three thousand three hundred and forty dollars. But because the laboratory has a secret discount because they have other equipment from Shimatsu in the lab, they are able to get this hemp analyzer, it delivered setup training and one year warranty. It's forty-nine thousand seven hundred sixty-one dollars and sixty cents, which it comes in under Roger. So we're asking that you authorize the purchase of the Shimatsu hemp analyzer for forty-nine thousand seven hundred sixty-one dollars and sixty cents.
Counsel, please.
Chief, do you have an idea of how long, how long the delay is? Do I know it?
I have no idea. When the crime lab opened, you've many, many years ago, Shimatsu equipment came in, which is the gas chromatograph and other equipment they have, which is still running for us.
We can help, we have.
We had about this, but we do have other Shimatsu equipment that's been extremely reliable. They're great, but if something does happen, they are immediately here and run that and make this guy in Austin area. So these hours quickly.
Chief, the most of the cases that come to the force of our hand is you think it's without a doubt before most of them.
It depends, just to meet our amounts. Do you go anything higher or has to go through state or city?
When you say higher, what do you mean? Weight or volume?
Weight or distribution of it.
You speak about the quality of it. If you wish. If you do, you talk about the quality, it's not, it's not like a true premium.
Right, that would be a misdemeanor amount. As long as it doesn't come as one ounce, it's a misdemeanor amount, which we technically.
Some.
Yeah. That's. We got a second, motion is second. All in favor, Joe Vance? You have this. Counsel, what do you have?
I just.
Okay.
You have this.
I have a deep consideration of request for emergency repairs to the four K and L pipe. It's two twenty, twenty-two twenty, still having to do three pack models or city engineer. How do you do that?
Good evening. In, as we talked about on Tuesday, in October twenty twenty, we received complaints about a floodstorm on a pipe on Blanche Street. This is next to South George and Con. And we went out and we looked at it and found that the pipe was completely rusted out on the bottom and had collapsed and we couldn't get through the pipe. Shortly after, going out and inspecting that and putting it in the process, we had another rainfall that that rainfall then caused the new building over there at South George and Con to fill up in the truck bed and some of the warehouse. There's no serious damage, but that necessitated it being an emergency call. Just so happened, right across the street is R P I Underground. Ran a plumbing, went to them, they asked them for a bid since the close proximity. They came back with an testament of ninety-five thousand four hundred sixty-four dollars and we're able to fix it in just a couple. Get on the railway to fix it. And the final quote came in eighty-seven thousand one hundred and seventy-eight dollars, which was less than the reason quoted. And so we're asking for this emergency authorization for this repair stuff. I have to take any questions if my.
Sir, when you say here on the railway, I told this to you first, I'm off.
It's already figured out.
Okay. Some.
Second. Motion is the second, all in favor, Joe Vance? Okay, now, that is how can you keep this long?
Well, pipes, concrete pipes is what we place it in. Ultimately, come in eight foot lengths and I don't also top my head. But here, let me go through it. It was three hundred twenty-eight linear, two hundred twenty-four inch pipe.
All right, there were no questions said, force system to be heard, so we'll move on to the city manager's report. That's our corporate feedback. You can leave the channel there.
Thank you, Mayor Mathis. Just a few things this evening. I didn't want to start off, but I thank each of you for, you support on shutting down, locking down our public buildings. I know we didn't have an opportunity to have a discussion with you guys, but with the watching those numbers, you know, barriers were rising. We got the final numbers from D P H that morning. I just felt we needed to make that decision. You know, we did this at the beginning and we were really fairly successful. I will tell you, our whole base is suffering right now really bad. We're not quite as fortunate as we were the first time around. We've got a lot of departments being significantly impacted this time. So we just think that's right decision. And I still do appreciate you guys supporting, supporting that. Due to COVID nineteen and the pandemic, it's not going to be a burst effort. And as you can imagine, this year in Atlanta, what's been decided to do is that there'll be some small gift baskets from our area filled with our gift baskets from here. And there'll be a tour that'll go around to the different office offices and places. I think it's gonna be Mayor Mathis, Senator Slaughter. I know those two names mentioned thus far, but so we won't have a big event like we normally do because of COVID, but we still want to get Boston's name out there. I think just maybe a more effective way to get our names out there than the big events. So it may work out. Like, you know, if there's been one good thing in COVID, we learned how to do things, become innovative and very flexible. Do you want to update, you know, back in November seventh, we had a cleanup, a cleanup week actually in Ed District Two. And as you remember, we only have one meeting to be assembled, so I didn't have the numbers yet to share with you. Then we're gonna have the last meeting to be assembled. So this one, it was a highly, highly successful event. We collected thirty-five tires, seventy bags of litter, and seven point four tons of debris during that week. And you know, it's just a pleasure because it's a team effort. It's just not Richard, it's just not Teresa. It's the whole public works department. It's our marshals going out to put the hangers on the door to get the folks to help us. We had a fantastic group of volunteers. We even did street sweeping and all those things over there that we add to the list that we don't do. So just a really successful event, and we're gonna continue on and choose out just as we go. The, as we discussed Tuesday evening, you know, we did have a very substantial rain event over the weekend. And I'm just proud to tell you, you stand right and tell you, you had one. I wish I would have had that, but I mean, you say, well, the moment we had people saying that perhaps we had spilled one of the plants more than likely with the pitch. We did not, that plant performed exactly like it was supposed to. Thank you for the funding for the basin because that, the last picture you guys saw of the basin was empty. It's about this far from the top right now, the last picture I saw yesterday. So it did its job and there was no problem whatsoever. We did have one manhole on Milver Street and the four hundred block of Milver Street that was submerged in water and did seep out some stormwater, the majority of it was stormwater, but of course, as you know, there's a small amount of sewage in that as well. As I told you Tuesday evening, the utility staff thought that was more of a blockage because it's just a short patch. But I have found out that there's an elevation problem right there, and so they're gonna alleviate that. And so that should take care of that manhole problem. So overall, with that rain event, we did very, very well. And even some of our friends from North Florida called and congratulated us, fired on the job that we've been doing. But with that rain set, we will still be seeing some major expenditures coming up for the inflow infiltration. We're not done yet. There's a lot of that still happening. Now that we have a status system in, a commitment to play, and Daryl and his group can see it and analyze these reports, it's gonna help us solve any more where a lot of this is happening. But there's gonna be some more equipment needed. There's gonna be a lot of things that are, that we're gonna bring before you, but definitely. And along those lines, I know tonight, we appreciate you guys approving that was one point one million dollars in equipment. You know, our employees work hard and they deserve the best equipment they can get to get out there and do the jobs. So why, well, I know it's big expenditure. One more time, it did come under budget, about thirty, almost thirty-two thousand dollars. But we've been in the past, over the years, where we've got four people stuck in the truck trying to do the job. You know, COVID and things like this now, major, we can't do that. So we're trying to prepare ourselves for the future as well with those equipment purchases. Valastin Main Street, in New Valastin Main Street, was awarded a ten thousand dollar grant for marketing purposes. Genesee, Georgia Power Max Spec Grant, ten thousand dollars. So our Main Street program has twenty thousand dollars now for a really upgraded, sophisticated marketing campaign, which Ellen and Rachel always do a good job of that. But now they've got a little spending money to upgrade our marketing. And we were one of five cities that did get the two thousand dollars and again, graciously, Georgia Power Max. Also, I sent, Taylor sent an email out probably yesterday, the day before. It's time to prepare for our strategic summit. And John, that is what I would like to see on the agenda for us to discuss. And we'll start placing those on the agenda. And that's gonna be here March eighteenth. And we'll be back at the Women's Building, doing things a little bit different even from the last time we were at the Women's Building. Because we had some acoustic problems and some lighting problems. So Gordon Maynor will not be with us this year. He's, we're trying to retire for the third time in his career, but we'll have another gentleman that has kind of highly recommended. And so that'll be the only chance this year, but get those out of this and then we'll get to working on it. Also, as Mayor Mathis stated, what we're doing, in case you get a question, like we did the last time, since the building is a lot, if anyone would like to have systems to be heard, they can present it via email, and I'll read them to you as we did the last time. So we may have some questions on that. I'd be happy to answer any other question.
My seat, I was talking to you that we was very, that he is online like he did years ago on East. Just like he called, he said he was. We didn't have a phone. And I'm very concerned by this call. And our money is the city, the city and the county. And if you could help the party and see if there's anything that he can help that we can make that, you know, get these, get these shots into law.
We have these, yes, I absolutely agree with you. We have these discussions, but we, the problem for us is we just have no control of the distribution of that. And that always seems to be, and then on top of that, there was even sluggish with the distribution.
What I refer to is that if you and a very new city mayor, a time manager, and the chairman talked to, you know, talked to the health department and seeing if there's anything that we can help.
Sure, absolutely.
Do, we really do this thing.
Yeah, yeah, and I would have to say, we have, the fire, first response folks that meet the tier level, many of our employees that have met that they were there in that tier have been the health department for their vaccinations. I really think next week, we're gonna see it opened up more than it has been. I was reading something Governor Kelp today that led me to believe that next week it's gonna be opened up more, the tier structure is pretty much gonna be everybody can get the shot. But the problem with it is, are they available? Even though we opened up everybody now, are they available?
You know, we're deserving, but I just don't see how you do it really pharmacies. You know, going, we're doing a massive job.
Well, it's one pharmacy, because he paid the health department, he's giving them as well. That's what most of our folks have wanted. Well, it's one pharmacy, because he paid the health department's paying them as well. That's where most of our folks have went, as a matter of fact, is to the Department of Health for their vaccination.
We don't have to talk to.
We sure will.
And see if anything.
Yeah, that's another recommendation too, yes. I'm going to have that conversation to see what kind of pace we can achieve. Uh, even frozen, uh, that, uh, that vaccine all lasts fifteen days, so if it shows up, you know, be ready to stick it some arms. The other part is our messaging. Uh, there is no letting up with masks, distancing, with, of course, hand washing, with sanitized and not touch surfaces. So please, for all the council, uh, the people that look up to you, if you step up your messaging to, to be diligent in that area still. Obviously, we've taken that step for the city and city buildings as well, because we were losing our workforce. Believe that our research going to service hours, which we're all working the bar, but I think he's done a job suit. So I applaud, I applaud your.
I just want to say also, as part of the city council, men and women at the hospital, we already have a plan, we already, I know from the P S A, that we are now getting out talking to, uh, more people like, uh, I got a lack of, we are getting more nurses, some nurses who are in our retirement, so I think that. We can also, we can, it's come back just to the shots in the place. I'm trying to find some different, uh, like satellite places too, as long as anybody don't have a time of staff, not many people get it. We've had, uh, a lot of people who, uh, really just, like, a lot of things, we're in the process of trying to get some of them to just come and go have a station, a surgery, but any of this, you know, just that shot and that information and stuff like that. Um, I was going to, I'm talking to somebody at the health department, the Department of Health, uh, about doing a P S A, I'm already talking to people at hospitals and we are getting at the process of really, really doing that. I don't know if he has a just young hospital person trying to encourage you, so that's one way of getting out communication. We're trying to get the hands-on people to do that too, and so we do not have enough hands-on people to do it right now. That's one. And also the vaccine access to come in and steal the procedure, how we're going to be able to, you know, they have a process, is this working somewhere?
Right, yeah. And one of the things that Mayor mentioned, the refrigeration units have happened, people weren't prepared for that. They were getting the vaccines and the refrigeration units they had didn't get the temperature that it must stay at for a fifteen day shelf life. So there's, you're absolutely right. We'll get, we'll talk with them, counsel Fickers, and get some answers.
Thank you for that, too, yes. And that's your matter, is if people don't have enough of the vaccine and that's coming to us, then they're not, they're not going to get it. We can go cheaper, seven, seven, we can, as it looks.
And just another thing, if you want to, just want to remind you, remind your constituents, we're still getting great response on, uh, putting fixed Badust. But just keep reminding you folks that especially now that the doors are locked, you know, the out of the open, folks, they cannot make a hold of us. And so just keep in mind that if they've got an issue they might just look at, get out there in the last to put them fixed and, uh, we'll take care of it.
Well, we have some young streets on BS two, this, um, this law, we have to pass several times to the Badust Street. And I have sent those, that email, you know, these, these who's from House State.
Right.
And they want to do less streets and they have to pass over and over and over.
That's right.
And no one has responded back to me.
Well, you and I are going to get, get out the first year because I don't know their manager how to get a hold of them. But the product of timing was perfect because Richard and Teresa are working on a new adopt the street, adopt the corner kind of program. So this will be our, this will be a great, great start for that. So if you can get, you do want to contact me, we certainly will. Uh, it is a, it's a perfect time for that, you know?
Next question, like, um, how's some recognition for council, we have a lot of, we need to get examples, you know, on like shots. Then the parkway heads and all of us need to get an example to do it as a senior project, to get some of our people to see their parts of. We got a lot of people asking, you tell them what's that you take in.
That's right, absolutely. Once that tier low goes away, it's broken downwards. Well, the age level, I'm not, I'm not going to give a back tier after, but once the majority of you can do it, those are going to take it. We can do it and we'll get a photo off of it. Everybody getting shot. Sure.
Counsel, you have a comment?
Yes. First of all, have some, I actually, I love these citizens who are, that, that, wonderful. It's nice. It's a good thing and it's showing it in the constantly thinking about ways to work this project, yes. So this is something I'd like to do one, it looks good. I'm coming to call that, where it was kind of somewhere, but I love it. That project. The second thing too, also is, uh, the question came up about how these meetings, brushing, definitely in all the same, a lot of them are. Council.
This is approved.
Brushing is a big, we gave to see it on shots up to.
Yeah, yeah. I think you do work session myself, I'll do that. You, you know, it's quite absent, but my absence is, 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 I'll be, you guys on the line.
Okay. We're not there for a very.
And I've talked about the later days as well.
No, no, I'm saying now because it's still, you don't waste time, we love it.
Yeah, but we're at now, we're pretty lively, I'm saying, how do you mark this in the game?
And the only thing to, I would like to say that we have to keep allowing you, about each minute and encourage our citizens, because we are working on that, to send in your comments about what you know, your citizens who care, please send in so that's, just so we can put that out, get that information out to our students and throughout that. And I love the petition.
Counsel, thank you, girl. Any other, any other counsel comment?
I was going to say, Ashley, thank you for the newsletter to President, it's all right, it showed how to go. And I don't know if there's no hope in that, but you did a good job. We did a very good job. The necessary came out and you showed, uh, Captain Andy and Councilman Julie real good. Everybody knew everything in the process, thank you.
It was great. Can I get those two, I don't know. Second. All in favor of Joe Vance?